Scott, I have seven o'clock if you'd like to call it to order.
Sir, yep, I just got seven o'clock on mine, so, okay, we're gonna call our meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. This is our Thursday, August 3rd, 2020, special Board of Education meeting. Before we take roll, could you please join me in the flag of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Crouse, you please take roll.
Yep, President McFarland.
Here.
Vice President Singer.
Here.
Secretary Roush is here. Treasurer Fidel.
Here.
Member Baker.
Here.
Member Blasey.
Here.
Member Lauterbach.
Hold on.
I see John. My count him is here.
He's unmuted. We know he's here, though. I can see him.
We have seven here, Scott.
Okay, thank you.
Cindy unmuted me, so I can say I'm here now.
Outstanding. Okay, we'll go right into number two, request to address the board. Mr. Sherrill, is there anybody who would like to address the board?
We have Mr. Chapman here, as it's shown in the agenda, and he's gonna join us and be outside to go here.
All right. Mr. Chapman, are you with us?
He is. He's given himself ready, Scott. I think the floor is his, and he's ready, I think. On June 7th, I noticed something that was peculiar. It wasn't that our white community had an anti-racist rally, nor was it the young white family of four whose daughter, between the age of eight and 12, was holding a simple black-and-white sign that read "Black Lives Matter." What struck me the most was the background story. What would move this family to action? This mother and father had the privilege of not ever imagining their children being gunned down at the hand of a police officer, and yet, they were marching. The picture was mesmerizing. A white family saying "Black Lives Matter." I'm intrigued to know about the conversation that led to the participation in the rally. Did the children see the notion of white superiority being demonstrated by Derek Chauvin as George Floyd took his last breath after eight minutes and 46 seconds of knee-crushing oppression? Or did the children see a jogging Amon Aubrey gunned down by the McMichaels, who said Aubrey had just left a construction site? Maybe the children saw Amy Cooper making a false allegation that she was being threatened by a black male. I wondered how the parents struggled to explain the paradox of police officers who are here to serve and protect and to make everyone feel comfortable compared to George Floyd asking for his mother as he was casually murdered in public sight. The children must have been incensed when they learned that Aubrey's killers were free to roam Georgia for two months and was only arrested two days after the release of the video and a public outcry. I wondered if the parents explained the fullness of Amy Cooper's white lie and how it could create black death. As the family sits in disillusionment and indignation, wondering what they could do, someone probably suggested attending an anti-racist rally. I can envision the gathering of poster board, markers, and the joy overtaking personal responsibility in making a democracy reality for everyone. Now, two months after the rally, as we prepare to enter a new school year, we cannot ignore the lessons of this summer. Derek Chauvin and the McMichaels are in jail. Amy Cooper was fired from her job and was charged with making a false report. Their racism was not acceptable. Their racism was acceptable in the past and is no longer tolerated. Their implementation of white superiority has caused each of them loss. Just as we prepare students with reading and writing and mathematical skills for the future, we must prepare our students to live in a diverse world, and this means dismantling white superiority and black inferiority. About a year and a half ago, a racist video was posted of my son and his girlfriend. My son, an African-American male, and his girlfriend, white, experienced this backlash. Over 300 students saw the video before one lone student brought it to the attention of his teacher, who in turn shared it with the administration. What ensued was a series of steps and missteps. I bring this up in response to the superintendent's special communique from July 15th. If MPS is going to truly be safe for all students, there must be an acknowledgement of racism followed by transparency and a willingness to learn from past mistakes. Transparency must be immediate. You see, the parent of the student who made the racist video was on the payroll of MPS. A more recent Snapchat was also made by a student who is on the payroll of MPS. I do not equate the racism of the children with their parents. I'm simply illustrating how systemic racism is and that all of us must take inventory of our own households. As we address DEI as a district, every employee, teacher, principal, secretary, support staff, central office, bus driver, lunch worker, custodial worker, as well as every student, parent, and community member, must not permit racism to breed under the guise of free speech. It is not a joke. Several students made this claim about the racist joke that was made about my son. I simply -- the author of the Snapchat also posted the same. You see, this student should have received direct instruction about racism. Like any good instruction, there needs to be clear examples, and the far-reaching consequences should be explained. We do not have to look further than Derek Chauvin, Amy Cooper, and the McMichaels to know that allowing white supremacy to fester, or white superiority to fester, is negligence. With DEI, I propose addressing two areas that demand attention. For students who continue to demonstrate exclusionary behavior, they must undergo restorative practice that focuses on the impact of the victims and those who are indirectly impacted. Also, the Snapchat posted revealed a total disregard for creating an environment of inclusion and referred to the two students who called out the behavior as -- and I'll let you fill in the B-word -- and also referred to them as tattletales. As a district, we must commend those students who speak out and ensure that every student will be supported in making MPS a safe space for all.
Okay, Mr. Chapman, thank you so much for joining us tonight. I don't know if you're listening. I agree with you 100%, and I think you will see that in our resolution, we're gonna discuss later this evening, the resolution to change the system, eliminate racism, and create more equitable and inclusive schools for all. Your point is well-received by this board, by me, that we can't ignore the lessons that we've learned this summer in witnessing the horrific events that we've all seen and that have been televised throughout the nation. Systemic racism does exist, and I can tell you that we, as a board and our administrative team, are 100% committed to eradicating it in our district. So, I am so very sorry for what your son had to endure. It is heartbreaking, and it's a black eye on our district, for sure. Nobody's perfect. We're not perfect, but we are committed to change, and we are committed to making middle public schools a more welcoming, equitable, and diverse environment for everybody. So, thank you very much for joining us tonight. I appreciate it. Mr. Sherrill, is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
We're showing nobody at this point in time.
Okay. With that, we'll move on. We're into item three, Board of Education Matters. This is item 3.1. Mr. Sherrill?
Yes, so this is an upgrade from Neola, a little bit out of sync because of recent legislative changes that occurred in June, so it could not wait to the fall update. So, this was sent to us, our policy consultant, Neola. We ran this through, very quickly, through the Ministry of Services group, and is now here for your full approval. Not a lot of latency for change. This is law, bringing down Title IX changes. The changes are predominantly on some procedurals, appeals, and that we needed multiple people involved in any Title IX complaint, which we are now ready to do, and be a full compliance with. We needed to bring this to the board meeting because it needs to be in place by August 16th.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sherrill. With that, I will accept the motion for item 3.1, please.
I move that item 3.1, the Neola Title IX Policy 2266, be approved.
Support. Motion by Pam, support by John. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next up, item 3.2. This is another action item. This is our return-to-school plan. This is Mr. Sherrill and Mr. Jaster.
I will open it up. My Mr. Jaster's gonna share a screen, I believe. He'll be doing most of the presentation tonight. As you know, the return-to-school roadmap by the governor is guiding this, and we need to have this approved by the Board of Education and forwarded to the state of Michigan by August 15. Her guidance came out from a committee with science experts and educators and others at the committee, and it listed a group of strongly recommended items as well as mandatory items for Phase 4, but also we need to include plans for Phase 1 through 6. And Mr. Jaster, we'll walk you through that PowerPoint that presents our plan to you that you have in front of you tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherrill, Mr. McFarland. So, I am gonna start with the PowerPoint. I will be referencing the document that was shared in your packet, which is the entire Preparedness and Response Plan for the District. And so, if there are questions at the end, and we need to go to a specific section in that plan, we can also do that. I can pop it up on the screen. But just to confirm everyone can see the PowerPoint presentation, I assume? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right. First, I'd like to just touch on some of the guiding principles that we have discussed at length here in the district, and I guess also to note, or to remind everybody, that what is in this plan is really information that largely comes straight from the governor's roadmap, her 2021 Return to School Roadmap that was released at the end of June. We also have allowances for providing regular updates to this plan, and all of that, as it relates to safety, PPE recommendations, guidance. We are gonna be referencing CDC, you know, most recent documents. We're gonna work with our local health department officials at any point where we feel like we need to make revisions for the plan. Excuse me. So, the overarching goals here, we certainly wanted to focus on keeping all of our stakeholders safe, MPS students, staff, community members, safe and healthy when they're in our buildings. We wanted to maximize opportunities for students and staff, increase the likelihood that MPS can open and remain open, and then continue to promote academic growth in the best ways possible. Part of the document that you were sent in your packet has an entire page devoted to assurances. And again, I'll just touch on a few of these. It was much lengthier if you read the entire section, but the main principles here are that the district must adopt this Preparedness and Response Plan no later than August 15th, as Mr. Sherrill had mentioned. The plans must include safety protocols for all phases, which we will touch on tonight, and we must agree to follow all the items listed in the Executive Order 2020-142, and that link is here, but I think that most of you have already had a chance to read that information directly from that website link as well. So, what we're gonna cover, Section A of our plan, is when the district is in Phase 1 through 3, so if we are moved out of Phase 4 backwards, what that's gonna look like. Section B is how we will respond in Phase 4. Section C, how we change protocols, if any, in Phase 5. And then the last section, you are required to mention any items that were excluded that might have been listed in the strongly recommended language in the governor's roadmap for reopening schools. So first, we'll start with the information in Phase 3. And this is just a reminder, I'm sure most of you, as you've been keeping up with this, are fully aware that if we move back to Phase 3, it does require the closure of all buildings. The only exception there that's noted, employees and contractors necessary to conduct basic functions of the district are allowed. Athletics are immediately suspended after school activities, and any inner-school activities also immediately suspended. We have to offer alternative models of instruction, and that would be, we've talked at length about this, how our teachers in the spring moved to an online format very quickly. We obviously have a different system, a learning management system that we are gonna use if that occurs again this fall, Canvas, which you've heard quite a bit about. And then, the last two bullets here, provide continuation of food distribution, that would likely continue again, and then continue to pay school employees because, as of the spring, that was a part of the legislation that was required, even in the event of a closure in Phase 3. I won't read through all this, but briefly, in the first paragraph here, you'll see there are, again, links or references to all the state documents that we are forced to review and to consolidate into our plan. So, there's the original executive order, there's the My Safe Start Plan for Reopening Michigan, and then there's specific information about the safe schools and reopening for 2021, the Return to School Roadmap. The middle link is the MPS Remote Learning Plan for Phase 1 through 3. And the first thing I'd like to just mention is that this is not the same plan that was used in the spring. So, the original continuity of learning plan used April through June was completely revised, and so this looks much different, and certainly we have different focus areas. Now, one thing that just jumps to mind as a quick example is in the spring, we were told very clearly that we were to hold students harmless to the best of our abilities, make every effort and extra opportunity for them to improve grades. You know, high school students, seniors would graduate based on their standing as of the closure. So, those types of things are reconsidered in this new remote learning plan. So, if we are forced back to Phase 3 now, we are gonna have to make provisions to grade student work, assign grades, make sure students are earning credit. So, still touching on, you know, what are the main points of what teachers focus on day-to-day and providing feedback to kids, but certainly it would look different in this new format with our new learning management system. You can see the other bullets below, again, emphasizing care, safety, health, and overall well-being for our stakeholders. Consider how we are gonna provide continuity of essential learning, especially if we flip back and forth, potentially several times between Phase 4, Phase 3, maybe back to Phase 4. That certainly will prove challenging, but again, the learning management system that we have used, or purchased and have been using now since spring and have trained teachers on is gonna be a great help in that area. Provide consistent, meaningful, engaging, high-quality experiences, and then equitable access, everything from providing technology to making sure that we have Wi-Fi access at different places in the county for students who may not have access, and then ensure all members of the MPS community understand their roles in their remote learning environment, including certainly what teachers and students do, but also how parents can assist in any way possible while they're at home as well. So, just to wrap up this section about remote learning, just to note a few things. Again, I mentioned that we have the new learning management system, Canvas, and that'll be an essential part of how we deliver curriculum in Phase 3. I stated that teachers were provided introductory training in the spring, and throughout the summer, we have had opportunities for those who have wanted to work ahead to do so with support, and we also have taken the opportunity, if face-to-face instruction ends and we move back to Phase 3, all learning we have prioritized is gonna be directed by MPS teachers. And so, that is, for us, a very important one, and we wanna make sure that's noted tonight. As you can see at the bottom, I highlighted again that this is a different plan than the one that we finished with in the spring. So, I don't want people to mix up the two documents. The Executive Order 2021-42, specific requirements in Phase 4, and I think this is probably where most of the questions will come from this evening, and I'm sure that between Mr. Sherrill and I, we can give all the answers that people would have, but there is gonna be a point here, and you can see in this highlighted section where the board is going to need to make a decision tonight. So, I will spend a little time on that in just a second, but to begin with, face-to-face instruction is permitted in Phase 4. And when we did our original survey of families and stakeholders, it was clear to us that well over 50%, probably more like 60% or even slightly higher, wanted and desired a face-to-face experience for their kids. So, that has led us to the opportunities and the choices that you're gonna see here shortly. When you get it further into Section 4, it does talk specifically about PPE and face masks, has an entire section devoted just to face masks. And so, the high-level highlights here are that students in Grade 6 through 12 must wear the masks unless there is a medical exemption of some sort, and it can't be tolerated. Staff are required to wear masks in all buildings the entire day. Cohorts of kids in the elementary group are exempt, and you can see that, you know, DK through 12, so DK representing Developmental Kindergarten, which is taking place at our pre-primary center, are not required to wear the mask if they're in their cohort groups and they're not mixing with other students. But we have heard that that is certainly an area of concern, and so it's noted here that even in cohort groups, we are gonna strongly recommend that the mask be worn for the entire school day, but if the Board of Ed prefers, that certainly can be changed to required, so then it would be a DK through 12 requirement for the mask for the entire day. There is some research, certainly the younger the students are, the more challenging it is to keep the mask on, make sure it's worn properly, it's not being touched. make sure it's worn properly, it's not being touched. And certainly, there's a higher likelihood of, you know, more frequent mask breaks being needed for those younger kids. The third bullet point here, districts must also plan protocols for the following items in Phase 4. So cleaning protocols, specific hygiene protocols, athletics, screening and testing, and then student transportation. And all indoor large assemblies are prohibited throughout Phase 4. When you get into the next section here, this is what I referenced at the start of the Phase 4 discussion. We heard loud and clear that the majority of families really felt that face-to-face was the best option for them. But we also heard, and there is certainly a very vocal group who is concerned about return to school. And we have two other options here. We have a completely online virtual academy model that we have been working on and continue to build out over the summer. And then to accomplish scheduling for kids who have maybe some more unique courses that are part of their schedule, you know, possibly an IV course, a high-level IV, a band, maybe welding, things like that that are hard to replicate in the virtual world. There's a hybrid option where a student could report to the building for an hour, two hours, whatever the case may be, and then work remotely for the remainder of the time. Obviously, there would still be some exposure risk during the time that a student would be in the building with, you know, 800 students potentially at a high school, 900 students or more. But it's an option that we think will work well for some families, and they may want to choose that. So again, the main point here is that we wanted to provide choice, and we were listening to feedback from stakeholders. And these are the options that we have come up with and that we have been working on for the last month to develop. The sign-up for the virtual and the hybrid continues this week, August 3rd through the 7th. And we have to confirm placements by the end of the week. So I know based on outcome of tonight's board meeting in the morning, there's going to be another message that goes out to all families who have signed up for the virtual or the hybrid. They will require them to consent. So there'll be a reply necessary to consent for virtual learning for at least the first semester of the school year. And then beginning next week, August 10th, it gets very busy very quickly. Students will begin being contacted by their home buildings. Administrators are going to begin adjusting schedules, which includes also the fewer kids that are going to be left in the face-to-face environment are going to need to be rebalanced into classes. And we expect that there'll be some efficiencies gained, but probably not enough to completely support the virtual. So we are looking at some different staffing options there to make sure everything's covered. And then, as I mentioned, the teachers who have continued to work ahead with Canvas on their course development will continue to do so right up until the start of school. Also in Phase 4, it talks at length about mitigation efforts. And so I tried to highlight those on one slide here. And obviously, this takes up several pages in the original document. But again, personal hygiene is encouraged, washing hands regularly, sanitizing hands if you can't wash them. You know, best practices, avoid touching your mouth, face, eyes, and so on. And we're going to have to work especially hard with our younger elementary students to make hand washing breaks and demonstrating proper hand washing a priority. And really just setting those new procedures in place, really beginning from day 1. Frequent disinfection of surfaces is going to be an expectation. And it's very likely that in individual buildings, there are going to be scheduled cleaning breaks every few hours or so. But we also have made some great progress working with our third-party contractor at BioClean that handles our building cleaning and sanitation. And they are going to continue to work closely with our building principals to make sure that they are part of the solution and making sure that they're getting into rooms and common areas often during the school day. Touched on PPE and especially masks. But again, we have some other items that we've spent money on and invested in, desk shields. We certainly need to consider how these are going to be used at the different levels. There was some discussion earlier that, you know, potentially it would be best if the secondary students carried them around. But we also have some concerns that they won't hold up as long. So if they are going to remain in classrooms, we're going to have to work out that those are cleaned and sanitized as well. Building procedures to avoid large gatherings are going to be critical. I think this is a good place to point out that if this plan, the framework for the district is approved tonight, all of the buildings are working on specific details and specific procedures for their individual schools. And you can imagine comparing a high school building, either of the two high schools, to a Plymouth Elementary or Woodcrest. Those procedures are going to look drastically different. So we know a critical next step here is really to have the details added at the building level as well. And we're going to expect and require our principals to determine how they're going to share all this information out with their students and parents in advance of school starting so that on day 1, when people arrive, they are going to know what to expect when they get to the school and get to the campus, so they know where to report. Health protocols, self-screening daily, this is for staff and students. We need parents to help support this, especially with the kids. We're certainly asking people to avoid nonessential travel. And then certainly, you won't have to deal with the quarantining that might be required if you do. And then we need transparency and open communication to report illnesses and COVID-19 symptoms if anyone has them, students or staff. And we do work closely with the health department. Anytime there is a case, we are going to be in touch with them. And we will work through with their guidance, next steps, and considerations if a specific school or a classroom might need to be quarantined, for example. Briefly, if we move into Phase 5, it's our opinion that at this time, the best course of action is to continue with most, if not all, of the planning that we already have in place for Phase 4. And certainly, if we, over time, start to loosen some of those requirements. Because I'll point out that in Phase 5, there are no required items for safety protocols. They're all just recommended or strongly recommended. But since we have adopted, you know, 99% of the strongly recommended items already in Phase 4, we feel it's just best practice to continue with those. And if we do loosen some of those restrictions, it will be with guidance and input from our local health department. And I just wanted to note here that MHSA guidelines for athletics, really, Phase 5 is a critical phase for athletics. And as many of you are going to be getting updates over the next few weeks about high school sports, we are still waiting as to how we are going to proceed with anything that is scheduled for indoors. So for example, swim, volleyball, those items currently, or those sports currently are not allowed. And we are still waiting for guidance on sports that are considered high-risk outdoors. And high-risk outdoor sports are typically those that might have physical contact, and that includes soccer, football. And I may be missing another, but we still have not gotten clear guidance on what's going to happen next. They do have to go ahead, the sports teams, to begin practicing outside once they officially start, August 10th for football, and then August 12th for the rest of those fall sports. And just in discussion today, it looks like it's possible that we might even have a delayed start for some of the middle school sports. But that discussion about the middle school sports and their calendar is ongoing right now with the member schools in our middle school athletic league. This slide here just references any of the highly recommended protocols being excluded in Phase 4. And obviously, this is a big one for people. It is social distancing. So to be fully transparent, we are not able to guarantee social distancing in all the buildings. And it's mentioned here that the reason is simply that we have so much variation in classroom size, layout of building, different types of furniture. There are just too many variables to be able to control that. So we're being very honest in saying that we are going to use every other PPE that we can. We are going to really beef up our cleaning and sanitizing. And we are certainly going to distance children to the extent possible. But again, this specific guideline of 6 feet is not something that we can guarantee is going to happen across the board just based on all these other factors that I mentioned. Acknowledging here briefly that most of the information in the presentation comes directly from the governor's documents, but also CDC guidance. And many of our professional organizations have collaborated on what they are also doing for their best practices and their recommendations. So those are noted here. And if there are specific questions about the original document, I can switch off with a PowerPoint here, and I can go into that if people need to see it. But again, I think all of you have a copy in front of you. So certainly willing to take questions, and I know Mike is still on the line and can jump in as well.
Okay, so Jeff, when do you want us to discuss the language in Phase 4 that is required versus strongly encouraged?
It's my understanding that that needs to happen tonight. I don't know that we have extra time for that.
So I guess my initial thought is, I understand the need or maybe the, having the language switched from strongly encouraged to required gives some uniformity. But with the children who will be impacted by that change, what happens? With required, that strict language, do penalties come with that? And how do we enforce those penalties against a kindergartner who pops his mask off?
So Scott, I'll take that question a little bit. Just a reminder that the governor had a special counsel that worked with her on these guidance. And on there were health officials and scientists, and certainly educators and social workers. And so they specifically came out with the strongly recommend it for K through 5. And there was a reasoning in there that, you know, some kids just aren't tolerant of a face mask for 6 to 7 hours yet. Maybe you need to build that tolerance up over time when they get into school to do so. There is some leeway for the very medical fragile children to not wear it. So those who are unable to take a mask off by themselves physically, or those with highly unusual breathing issues. And so they, if you recall, you saw on that document, it says they shall not have a mask on. So those are taken care of. But the medically, or the students who are tolerant, that build tolerance to face masks up for 6 to 7 hours. And so when you say "shall" versus strongly recommend it. And our strongly recommend it would be, we think that's the norm. The teacher's going to wear it, every student's going to wear it. But we know in K 5 that those young folks, it's going to be a lot of teaching, a lot of pulling it down.
I mean, they're going to be chewing on them, they're going to be leaving them laying out over the place.
And there may be, you know, children with, had a social emotional reaction to it that need to be moved to the classroom for a little period of time as we build that tolerance up. So that's why we were going there. We've heard some have some issues with that. And so we'd be willing to make that language, but it's not necessarily our recommendation, nor was it the recommendation from the governor's council to us.
Okay. And any other board members want to weigh in at this point?
Yeah, I'd like to, Scott. I'm one of the people who asked questions of Mike and others about whether it should be required versus strongly recommended. My concern is if we make it strongly recommended, we don't have anything we can enforce. Recommendation is just that. We have a responsibility, obviously, to provide a safe learning environment for kids. But we also have a responsibility as an employer to provide a safe working environment for our teachers and staff. I think that requiring it better enables us to do that. I know, believe me, I know. I had the most fidgety, you know, kindergartner in the world, my son. I get it. But I think if we make it mandatory, I trust our teachers and our building principals to deal with noncompliance in an appropriate way on a case-by-case basis. And I suspect that we're going to have more kids who are naturally compliant than we're going to have kids that are not compliant. And, you know, I trust that we could revisit this after, you know, a few weeks if it's not working. But I think it's easier to let the horse out of the barn slowly than try to get it back in after the fat. So I, first of all, I really should commend the team for putting together a very thoughtful plan. And I know a lot of work has gone into this. I'd just like to advocate that we make masks mandatory in K 5.
Thanks, John. Anybody else?
Yes, Scott, I tend to agree and just say, you know, I do like John's suggestion that we maybe revisit after just a couple of weeks and see how this is going. I think if we as a board say, you know, our building principals have the authority to enforce this, we can always be cautious about enforcement and the ramifications of noncompliance. But this is one in which we could be a little bit flexible and review on a more frequent basis.
Okay, thanks, Phil. Anybody else?
I guess when I was thinking about both sides, I started to think about the needs of different age groups. When we're talking pre-K, kindergarten, first grade, it might be the more difficult time to allow or have kids wear the masks. And perhaps one of the revisits, if we would go with required, we could see how it goes, or we could, you know, try to break it out by age group, like second grade and younger would be required or would not be required, would be highly recommended. And third grade and up would be required.
Off of that topic, Pam, our superintendent association did a statewide poll. It's just a poll, not everyone answered. But it appeared to be about 30% each way. Did the K through 2 not strongly suggest it, not mandatory? 30% did mandatory K 5, and about 30% did not make it. It only did it strongly recommend it. So that's your statewide data for you, Will.
Can we, in the document itself, have it stated that it will be revisited at amount of time?
Yes, it's an expectation that this is revisited. So through the first couple of months of the school year, it may, it's possible that this could be a monthly topic if you chose.
I guess one thing I like about John's proposal is, you know, I've heard teachers say in the past, it's easier to start the year strict and loosen up than it is to start the year loose and then try to tighten up.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that proposition either. Actually, I think it's a very, kind of a smart idea. And I think it gives, I think it makes it easier for the kids and the teachers to explain that you have to have this on, not you should put it on, and here's why. They may not get the reasons why they should. But mostly, at least with my kids, they understand when I say you have to do something, they generally just do it. I know that's not the case for all kids. But as long as we are dealing with the kids who are noncompliant in an appropriate way, understanding that, you know, they're first graders, or second graders, or kindergartners, I'm okay with that. I have no problem with making it mandatory. I think the teachers would certainly appreciate it. So I guess, that being said, do we now have to have a motion within the motion to kind of approve the language first?
You haven't made a motion yet, so you can make, you need to make a motion, a second, and hopefully approval on the plan, and you can just add that language in there to do so. The one thing I do, it sounds like the board's with us, is "shall", and allowing us some wriggle room. Exclusion isn't something I would suggest. But that is typical discipline process eventually, within subordination or noncompliance. Eventually, we do remove on K 5, I would have some difficulty with that, just so you know.
I would have great difficulty with that.
Yep.
And I don't think we would get there, at least certainly not as a board with voting to remove somebody for noncompliance. But I do like the mandatory language. So then, Mike, what we would do is we would move to approve Item 32, and then just add the language after the motion is made?
Correct. You don't need to add it, you would just make that motion. It's our understanding that's the motion you're making. It's our understanding that's the motion you're making. So Jeff left it wide open, both situations.
John, I'll let you make the motion. If we don't have any further discussion. Okay?
Okay. I got to move? Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I just had one other question to Jeff. Do we have any good understanding yet of the, you know, to the extent possible, MPS teachers will deliver the secondary education through Canvas rather than, I guess, what percentage of our classes will be delivered by MPS teachers for the virtual option?
So that's probably my question, Jeff's. So we need to separate secondary and elementary on this topic. So we presently have enough elementary students that we'll be offering all MPS teachers teacher-led. So we weren't able to make that commitment until we knew how many students. So if I had five students in a first grade, a little difficult to put a full FTE to teach that five. And so the number's quite large. Right now, we're probably building somewhere between 19, 21 sections of elementary students, full sections virtually. Then at the secondary level, the model will be because of teacher certification. Johnny sitting in front of me is math certified. I can't pull Johnny out unless there's five sections of math, which there's probably not going to be, looking at the data, there might be two or three. And so we're working with the association, which we're going to update you on, on two letters of agreement in there potentially, to give our teachers an incentive to teach a course above their normal day. And there's some parameters and some timelines, we help them so it's attractive for them to do so. So at the secondary level, we're going to get as many MPS teachers as we just can to lead their courses. We know that we probably will not be able to do every course with an MPS teacher because of the amount of courses we offer. If you ever looked at our SCOG, our student, it's huge. We have more offerings than probably any district in the state. With that said, we're going to have to fall back on a vendor product for those that we can't offer. So parents will have to make their choice at that time. So hence how we got to the hybrid model. Jeff mentioned ban CTE, IB, IAP, individual courses, they may want to take the person. But also, we knew we may not be able to promise or commit that we could have MPS teacher teach every point level of every subject matter that we teach in this district. And so it's yet to be seen. So that's a step. Hopefully, our closed session with you goes well. We'll come back and try to get a letter of agreement with teachers tomorrow. We've been meeting, we're very close, as long as you are. And then from there, then by, we hope by midweek, we'll put an incentive out to the teachers, have them begin to sign up, and then we'll be, build that. It's a little bit backwards, I understand. And then we'll build the course catalog and have parents be able, and students be able to choose. MPS teacher, this one's driven by an MPS teacher, this one's an ingenuity course.
Great.
Thanks. That also allows a little bit to meet that social distancing, which we can't say we can get six feet everywhere, so we're not going to. Those districts are saying that, I'm not sure that's being open with that concept. But we'll be able to reduce classrooms with the volume that's coming out and level them and hopefully get closer to a classroom environment of six feet apart.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Good question, Phil, thank you. Okay, John?
Thanks, Scott. I move adoption of item 3.2, the Midland Public Schools COVID-19 District Preparedness and Response Plan as proposed, with the exception that masks be required rather than strongly recommended for students K 5.
Support.
That was Phil, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Okay. Motion made by John, support by Phil. Any further discussion on this one?
Hey, Scott, in the last meeting, we approved a lot of PPE, ATD items. And during that meeting, I was alluding to that, asking the question what the overall budget was. Mr. Lauterbach also asked that same question, and I believe that what Mr. Bruton said is that he would get back to us with what we believe the MPS budget is for this policy and the, all the pieces that go together with that. Were they able to put together a budget for us? We are aware of roughly the expense that goes along with this plan?
I think a lot of the expense was covered by the CARES Act, but Brian, if you could...
No, that'll be me still, Scott. So I don't think we ever said we were going to bring one back, and we could, but it would be maybe like your budget you adopted in June with not true numbers. Until we have staffing established, the number of students signed up, all your costs are attained there. So the question, Brad, you asked was reflecting on another school district and their cost, and how did they get to that number? And Brian explained to you, you know, million to a million and a half on PPE. But the real cost is, you know, in our operation is people. And so when we begin to staff these virtual classes, as well as the courses that we do, as well as this topic we're going to have in closed session about a letter of agreements for teachers to do virtual courses and do the new assignments that need to happen in court to run a school with these protocols, those full costs can't be captured. We have to agree with that. We're negotiating those numbers. If you want to ballpark, I could give you one right off the top of my head, it's probably $4 million in expenditures that COVID has created for us to spend this year. And that's true for all school districts all over, hence why you're getting extra dollars in the CARES Act, as well as your legislators are being very creative in sending you dollars to establish the ability to do that. Lobbying, they've been lobbying the federal government, through state governments, to provide you funds, knowing this year that COVID and the delivery instruction and PPE is going to cost you significant dollars.
So moving forward, even after we have our further negotiations, can we move forward with this weeks ahead, months ahead? Can we continue to try to keep tabs on what the rough budget is so we are conscious of that?
Yeah, the PPE stuff, I would say, you know, the budget would be closed at this time by September, right? All our supplies would be ordered. Now if we have to reorder down the road, broken supplies or more hand sanitizer, we'll have to cross that road. And then by then, we should be able to tell you the additional staffing we needed to cover this process and the stipends to cover virtual courses, because there is dual there. So if we go, for example, Brad, if we build 20 sections of elementary out, we're probably going to pull a few teachers that are presently, because a lot of students are coming out, have less sections in the school building, but we're still going to have to have new hires. I cannot eliminate full sections to equal the amount that we're doing there, which also helps us with the social distancing, but there's a cost to it. So yes, by September, we could give you a very, probably a very accurate number, somewhat fluid, what PPE, COVID has had a cost with between staffing and PPE.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
Did you want staffing too, Brad, or did you just want the cost as it relates to PPE? I was, I didn't follow your question, I'm sorry.
Both of it, you know, both of them together, because they're...
So an entire, entire cost, okay. Just so I can make notes here. Thank you. Okay, any other discussion?
Before we vote on this, John had mentioned kindergarten through 12th grade. Was that intentional? Are we leaving out our younger cohorts?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, that was, I meant DK.
So there is no DK. We call it DK. So K-12 covers that. State only recognizes K-12, we will not put DK in there. But, and then Pam, your question, GSRP. GSRP is separate, and that is included in the governor's panel. They have different rules, if it makes it this year through the budget cuts.
Okay.
And there's some worry about that.
Oh, no.
Good question, Pam. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor of supporting John's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, John. Next up is item 3.3, we have another action item. This is the Board of Education proclamation. Mike?
Actually, I'm going to hand this one, well, I can lead it. You guys know what you did last meeting, so you developed a mission statement, or a proclamation statement that fits into our diversity inclusion in the workshop. And so it's here, as we said that you would take that time to make sure this is a statement you want to make, and it's here for your action tonight. If you have further questions from that, I'm going to refer to Penny and Dr. Beasley, who I think both are online here.
Okay, great. I will take a motion for item 3.3 for the approval of the Board of Education proclamation that was discussed the last meeting.
I'll make a motion too.
The adoption of action item 3.3, there were some offline comments that were made that I'd like for us to consider as part of the adoption of it, because I think those were well, you know, well, comments that were well received and well taken, so...
So pursuant to that, John, I had spoke to Scott that I thought the one we had that came out of the board workshop should be a motion, a second discussion, just like we did the last one, and then you add or you don't add.
Okay, then I'll move adoption of 3.3.
Just to keep the procedure, yeah.
Okay.
Support.
Motion by John, that was support by Phil.
Yep.
Okay, now we have some discussion. We did receive some offline comments, as John alluded to. They were well thought out and they blended well into the proclamation. I just wanted to try to get some commentary from our DEI experts, Dr. Beasley and Penny, they are both online, and maybe they can weigh in on these statements and kind of give a little bit of light or a little, some direction as to, do we incorporate this language directly or is the purpose of this language already being served by the proclamation as it stands? So Penny or Dr. Beasley, if you could comment on this, we would certainly appreciate it.
Sure, I'll take the first one. Amy, feel free to follow up with comment. The first suggestion pertained to item 7, and in my opinion, has just offered stronger language. It seeks to strike the explore integrating additional content and replace that with integrate. Similar intent, just more powerful intent. So I think that's a good fit for us. Amy, what would you add to that?
I would agree, I think that's a good change.
Okay. Dr. Beasley, what about the second suggestion?
So the second suggestion asked us to add to segment 10, which read, "The board superintendent and administrative team will monitor and assess the district's transformation as an anti-racist organization." It inserted some language that says, "The administrative team should pay close attention to the number of reported race-related incidents and should address and take action to address each incident, as well as ensure appropriate reporting to the public." I think when we looked at this suggestion, certainly this is reflected in a number of places already throughout the proclamation. However, it certainly makes sense to call it out directly. We thought that it probably fits better in number nine. So at the end of that statement, it says, "We commit to student and staff accountability for actions prohibited by our district code of conduct and policy." We might want to add then, language that reads as follows. "The board charges the superintendent and administrative team with monitoring race-related incidents, taking action to address each incident, and ensuring appropriate reporting to the public." So that might be our suggestion to have it integrate that language within the proclamation.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Any other board members have any comments?
What about the frequency that's listed in that last sentence? Do we need to include any type of committed monthly update as it states in the paragraph?
I believe it already states that. Mr. Blighby, it states that we will be updating regularly in the language in a couple of different places, so I think we've got it covered.
Agreed.
So I guess procedurally, my suggestion would be to incorporate number one and maybe just clarify a little bit, in line with Dr. Beasley's suggestion, and move it to, I think it was, paragraph nine? Was that correct? And then we should redraft this so we have a final working version that everybody is happy with and on the same page, and let's bring it back to our next August meeting and approve it then. How does that sound?
Sure.
I don't know. Mike, what do you think?
You can do that, or you can give us directive to do as Dr. Beasley and Penny proposed and allow us to make that document, and we'll send it to you for one last read or something.
So we'll approve it tonight then with the proposed changes?
Yeah, it sounds fine.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, so we had, the motion then was brought forth by John, it was seconded by Phil. We had some discussion and we have come to some conclusions about proposed changes. Those are on the record. Any further discussion?
So we're changing number nine, number 10, and number seven. Seven, nine, and 10?
No, no, just seven and nine.
Seven and nine.
Just seven and nine. Okay, so not 10, just seven and nine. All right, gotcha.
Okay. All right, we just want to, let's see, I guess the final comment would just be to thank you to the anti-racist Midland for the suggestions and the clarifying language. Dr. Beasley, thank you very much. So if there's no further discussion, then everybody in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Now we have our closed session, we need a motion to move into closed session.
Make a motion to move into closed session to discuss MCEA tentative agreement.
Support.
Motion by Phil, I think it was support by Mary.
Correct.
Okay, all in favor? I'm sorry, any discussion?
Do we need a roll call to go into closed session?
No.
And I think we have to state why we're going into closed session, so I think Phil was cut off a little bit before he went through the whole...
No, he said it.
I thought he said it.
All right.
Tentative agreement with the Midland Public Schools Education. The one thing I think we need to add though, Pam, is that no decisions are made in there, it's only a discussion. If we do make a decision, it'll be when we come out, but I don't think we're at a decision point tonight, and so most likely the actual decision won't be tonight to do so. So we will come back out of closed session, back into open to at least close the meeting.
Correct.
Okay, very good.
Very good.
And our roll call votes, it's usually really almost all roll call votes, it's only if you think it's to be so large that it requires an individual vote. Keep that in mind.
Okay. All right, all in favor of moving into closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we are going to move into closed session.
Couple minutes and be in the new link for the closed.
Okay. Okay.
...
And that's my... So elementary, you need to watch sure where it's supposed to be. Uh, do you remember that number? We don't expect you to go to the school. We don't expect you to go to the... But if we had, let's say, seven, eight grade, and there's five, six, seven, eight, and they're all on, and we use it. And we... It's gonna be more beautiful in the morning, in the evening, in the night. It's gonna be more time to work, because we can do things, do like project. And we... We could have a... On the other side of the... We could... We could... We could... On the other side of the... We could... We could... We could... We're a little bit uncomfortable trying to create, you know, spending too much time in the library. We just have to get, get... And we've got, uh, we've got a little bit of... We're... We're... We've got a... We've got a... We've got a... We've got a... Well, that's... Yeah. So, Mary was in our last season. She's trying to... A lot of help. She was trying to give us feedback. But she loves to teach students. She has been asking me to ask stuff. I thought it was a good idea. Some people have something that they're looking for. And then we're young people, and we're looking for... They're looking for... They want to... The teachers, you know, they have something there as well. I mean, to be honest, we actually... We're just like, we're often there at work. We always... We're done, now we're... All out. We... 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 We think, we think our last year is the best of our life. But we're... We... Yes, it is. Well, we have either a little bit of help, and then they might not qualify to... But we can all, but we should have said, like, we're not... We're not... We're not... We're not always... We don't want to be so... I also feel that I have to... I have to... We're around the school, we're not the public. We think surrounding them is important, too. What about that? Which test, which... You need to start with, right? That ten seconds. And that's about it. You try to, when it comes back to it, these models are... I'm there after... There, you know, you see different... Don't, don't go... Just think, you know... You know, that... It's... You... I, that's why I expect... I... Yeah. I mean, I... Yeah, we had that discussion with every student, you know. I'm surprised I watched that. Uh, like, I wasn't going to... This week, last week, we saw, I don't think all of it, but it wasn't easy. We got the... That we used high spots as well, that we had the wide side off, off the way. I think we saw that there are still some spots where we have to... Send it to the class, to the class, to the class, to everybody. But, but I do want to be able to talk... This, uh, the... We look at the... I think we saw... Well, I don't know what the... I just... This is mandatory, or certainly, you know, quality. And you're right, you know, that's... You know... It is... You know, that... Yeah. The wide side, the wide side, the... We use the problem. And those in the wide side, we need to... Yeah. There's a couple of spots that we might have to discuss before I... That works well. I guess maybe one final question that I'd like to do around communication. So, I really, really think that, you know, I said this, I think that... I think that... I think that... Do this in the end point, kind of, is do... Maybe, uh, that... People... It's, it's... I think about that, the trade... You know, that... Because we... We... I think that... Yeah. Yeah, but I'm not saying that we... 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 Yeah, but I'm not saying that we... 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 So that MTF, the next year, that... Can't tell that much. My logic is that... So... So, if there's sixteen, or seventeen, or eighteen, or nineteen, or twenty, or thirty, or forty, or fifty, or sixty, or seventy, or eighty, or ninety, or a hundred... I think we're doing, you know, better than... Yeah. We can do it. We... 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 I agree with you. But I think that's... I think that... I think that... I think that... I think that... No, 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 but I think people get a lot, and they say a lot. That's really... I think that's... But here, I see that... 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 We're gonna... Now, we're... But... And we did that, and we put it together, and then we... We could do that. I think that's... I think that's... You know, that we're going to... We... That's... We... 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 It's just so... Who? What, what do you want? To go, to... And what's going on? And we just... We're trying to... We... We... Well... I think that's... I think that's... I think that's... It's... Maybe if it's a good... You see, I call you here. I think that's... You can do that. We saw a person, I think, you know, he's... He got... He got... He got... He got... He was... We're trying to... We try to... We... I'll be... I'll be... I'll be... I'll be... I'll be... I'll be... You know, I'm... I'll be... That's... I'll be... 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 Yeah, and I'm actually... I don't know if they'll show everything, always present. I think that... I don't know how to... I don't know whether... You did it? You did it, John. John here is popular with the... I'm glad I'm looking to see the weather, because that might be important, you know? Although, you have to have some respect, like, for... That, 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 you know? You see, you do on time, and you... Like, there's some kids, they're... They're... Yeah. Yeah, that was a big one, where I didn't expect it to be a video. I do think once you get a classroom set up, uh, sort of, actually, I think that's... Probably, you know, you... 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 This is how we're gonna grab the budget, you know? You know, you say, uh, and I just... It's kind of scary, but... At least, you know, at least, you don't need to... Well, I think the eyes on the side, you need to, you know, uh, like that, like, you know? And that, you know, to see this, you know? I always try, uh, after I do the question, I guys, I really like to do... I think that's... I think that's... Grabbing on the staff, like, to follow away, to accommodate somebody. And I'd like to act, you know, to... I'll be... I'll be... It's very good. I mean, in a minute, we... We... You want to... This is just, right, it brings up a... That's it. You want to... But then, first of all, you have to... Like, I'm like, yeah, it's... And... You know, I'm... I'm... From behind, you know? Yeah. This is... I mean, you... You know, Mary, when she's down, but she is just amazing. I didn't find those, uh, I just got here, and there's some, uh, words, you know? Uh, you know, you... Called Jeff, yeah, Jeff, remember? And there's these, there's this, this, this lady, this lady, this lady, this lady, who I think is doing something, though, that's... It's pretty about... And Jeff, you have, like, nine other ladies, kids there, I can all get... Nine, 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 I can... So, yeah, we work with each other, I think, that's... I think that's... You can... You got it pretty good, I think, uh... I'm... Yeah, my, my question about this video, exactly. I want to commend you, and staff all, like, this is John, you only have four weeks. You have to... Four weeks, and we already have a three-week... Then, basically, three skills involved. And I think it's not a silly thing. Just, sure, you could show how some of this is... Yeah, so we got to... I'm telling Brian, he's... I'm telling you... So I'm... I'm... You... You... So... Yeah. 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 Right, you have to do there, there's, uh, you gotta... You know, you get out, you get to the... You know, you... 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 You...
Side, because we still have some audience we're trying to get, make sure they're connected before you close.
Cindy.
Scott, can you hear me?
There you are, okay.
Hey, give us a minute, we'll, um, we'll be ready. We're, we're, we got a couple of things we gotta do on our side for the audience.
Mike, do we need to, we don't need to move to go back into open session, do we?
No, you need to... Right?
One of the same, the leave the close.
We, we motioned to leave the close.
Yeah.
So, now we just need to make a motion to close the open.
Right.
One motion.
Are we ready for that, or not yet?
Um...
Do we have everybody with us? Do we, one, two, three, four?
Yes, and the two present. We're good, we're good to go.
Okay.
I move to close the meeting. Support!
Motion by Pam, support by Mary. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Aye.
Everybody, adjourned, thank you.